All the school committee meetings to order Monday, December 6, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Ms. LaBelle Pierce, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for the last time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Another student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee.
Resource Committee met on Thursday, November 18. There were no grants to either submit or accept, no donations to accept. We discussed the rate and update on Goodrich Academy. We had the October 1 enrollment report, and I see we have Eva tonight, maybe she'll be giving us some more update on that. We had a request from Transportation for the FHS Ski Club. Mr. Jokler is starting the budget process. We talked about the breakfast of the bands and paraprofessionals and MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. That was it on resource.
Okay, school building needs?
School building needs. That was also, we met on Thursday, November 18. We approved the draft minutes. School building maintenance, the director gave us an update on what was going on. He also let us know, and speaking to people out there in the community, we have open positions at school building maintenance. School Department, the city, great place to work, think about that. You can apply at School Department. We talked about, a little bit about the redistricting planning update, AHRU update. How many, Mr. Shalafu, have, were just trained in the AHRU program? Was it two custodians?
We have all of our, we just had all of our six-month surveillance reports completed and updated on the, on our website.
Very good. Crocker Field, the Gale has been doing some work over there, and they gave us an update on Crocker Field. MB, MSBA, the Crocker Core Project, the working groups have been meeting. Some of the accelerated repair projects have been accepted. Boiler project complete, South Street roof complete, except for three shingles, which I think they're going to, to fix. So any, anything else?
Any questions?
No, just adding, just the DPW has been working with us because the sewer cam, which again goes underground, will be blowing through the irrigation pipes. It was really a great meeting because it was very specific about the, you know, the building enhancements that are happening. Two trees have come down that had shaded parts of Crocker Field, so that was, that was really positive development. No, I mean, thank you, Mr. Stevens.
We, the field looked great on Thanksgiving Day. Unfortunately, we didn't have a better result from the game, but we'll get them next year. So, Mr. Horgan, Policy Subcommittee?
Nothing new to report.
Nothing to report. Any questions? Seeing none. Student Support Committee?
Nothing new to report.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none. Personnel Subcommittee, nothing to report at this time. Executive Committee, nothing at this time as well. Student Representative?
I'd like to start off with a big congratulations to all our National Honor Society introduction, which will happen on December 9th, but congratulations to every single student that was able to make it in. It's a great honor and it's a great, really something have as, only as a college resume, but also stands up as a very good thing about your character and who you are. And for anyone that is, wants to watch, this will happen on Thursday at 7:00 PM. It will be streamed on FATV for anyone that is interested. Then we're going to go into some of the things happening this week. Parent-teacher conferences are happening on Wednesday, the 8th. It'll be from 2:00 PM, I mean, 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM and 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And these can be virtual or done in person for anyone that wants to. We really encourage all parents to really make sure to meet with teachers. Good opportunity, know a teacher and really check in on your student, seeing how they are doing. Then also a big announcement is that pool testing is now required for, if you like, extracurricular activities. This should be a good thing as it will help all of getting a more accurate number of how many kids are testing positive and also just to bring awareness to the issue. And it also requires more freedom with not requiring vaccinations for anyone who does not want one. And we like to say it is more accurate than a rapid test and only takes top five minutes in the beginning of class, so it really is not affecting your learning at any sort of ability. Then also, School Improvement Council is going to happen on December 16 at 6:00 PM in the FHS Library for anyone that wants to join. And then on December 8 is going to be early release for all students with a dismissal at 11:30 for FHS. And coming up, there is a, ACT exams are going to be happening on the 11th. Few other events, look out for Project Reports happening on the 17th. Then we are heading into, as we're in December, 23rd will be the early release and the 24th will be the start of holiday break, which we return on January 3rd. And also I'd like to say there is some, which is related to school, on December 6 today and the 8th, there has been doses found for the vaccine, if anyone wants it. You can look out, Mr. Rhodes sent out an email for more details. So we'd like to say good report. And then also to highlight, would say the game did not go as well as he wanted, but we beat Lomisur 6,000 cans to 2,000 cans. So I think that shows really a testament to what Pittsburgh is. Those, I think, to beat them three times over, that's pretty, pretty impressive.
Yep. Good job. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Moving on, approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of November 15, 2021.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Moving on, approval of the minutes of the executive session, school committee meetings of April 2, 2018, August 23, 2018, October 1, 2018, October 15, 2018, November 5, 2018, January 7, 2019, June 1, 2020, June 15, 2020, September 2, 2020, January 11, 2021, March 1, 2021, and August 10, 2021, and finally, September 13, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the executive session meeting?
Motion made to approve the aforementioned meetings.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Executive session is not necessary at this time. Communications?
I'll go.
Yes.
I'd like to thank everyone, really in Pittsburgh and the region, for coming out to support the Arts and Crafts Fair to benefit families in Armenia who are still suffering from the war on ArtsAC, which is an independent republic but has been invaded by Azerbaijan since September of 2020. We counted, I think we, over two days, there were close to 200 people who came to our event. And again, to share information about the, you know, the absolutely appalling conditions over there. And please remember, Armenia, you know, has been a very long-settled country. It is the only country in the world in which chess is a required component of the school curriculum. So just, I know, it, so, we had a lot of really cool chess players playing with Wachusett Chess Club. My uncle George Marajani put that together. We will be looking to do a commemoration of the 107th anniversary of the genocide, which will be Sunday, April 24, 2022. So if anyone has any, any interest in supporting, you know, just the public information about the situation in Armenia, and really, thank you Mayor DiNatale for supporting our efforts. I will be moving forward to see about connecting Pittsburgh to Gumri, Armenia, so that we can have some cultural exchange in the future. And even if that's just online, where people talk to one another, you know, on Zoom, I think that would be really positive, especially since Pittsburgh High School has had such a longstanding tradition of international students. So I think that's it for me, just real gratitude to Pittsburgh and the region for supporting, supporting a really good effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Probably some of the best baklava I've ever eaten was in jail on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm told by the superintendent, no one has come forward for public comment. Seeing none. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to start off with recognition of, I don't want to say retirement, of two school committee members because they're too young to retire. But they deserve to be recognized. First, I want to just start off with Jean LaBelle Pierce, who, after eight years of volunteering for the school committee and the public good of not only the school district and the students of Pittsburgh, but also participating in helping making Pittsburgh a better place to live, learn, and work. I want to thank Jean, your, your support and actually you doing your homework when I used to prepare the budgets and you'd call me and go through pages and some of the line items. And, and I appreciate that because, you know, your interest in, in all the details because the School Department is a complex operation and ultimately, we're all here to serve the kids. So I always appreciated you taking the time to, to look at the details. And also, your advocacy for students during the Student Support Subcommittee meetings and your on policy earlier have also been just outstanding. So, and also, I guess as a Clark person, I want to recognize you as a fellow Clarky here.
Right.
But it's a, it's a season of transition and also giving thanks and it's better to give than to receive. So this is my chance on behalf of the school committee to.
Thank you very much.
So, and then the second school committee member, well, I don't know where to start with Sally's journey. It started 13 years ago. I guess 13 is a lucky number, you and Taylor Swift, so that, I should add for that. Sally, you've been working with me and other school committee members from the, I guess from the day I arrived on, you know, the building needs and, you know, how we can make our schools better. But really, I think that just scratches the surface of your interest because I think you're really, first and foremost, you're humanitarian, humanitarian, and your care for people, whether they're young or whether they're old, whether they're old, wherever they come from, is unmatched. And your passion for the school district and our students is admirable and, you know, like Jean, sets a high bar for whoever's going to succeed you. So, again, on behalf of the school committee and just personally and John and Craig, and also Jean from John and Craig, too, we thank you and really for, on behalf of all the staff as well. You'll be a good advocate for the School Department and for, again, all the cities of, all the city residents in your, your new role.
Yes, you've now gone over to the DAXA.
She's going to bring a lot of light to it.
She will brighten it up, though, for sure, right?
Actually, could I just add something about Sally? Because it's Sally who got me involved way back when in Reingold at the School Improvement Council. And everybody Sally meets, she indoctrin, no. Everybody Sally meets, she.
Over to Shanghai.
Yeah. She inspires, I think is a better word, and, and challenges them to really get involved. And so, I mean, I'm anxious to see, I'm anxious to see you actually bring that light to the, to the council and, thanks. Because really, a lot of, I think, I would love to see us, you know, really try to get some more parents involved because that's what drew me here and, and I have a child with one more year to go. So she gave me her blessing, saying, yes, leave. But it just, it hits us so, you know, close to home. So appreciate all the work all of you have done and the commitment that you made. This is a hard job and you guys have done it in the worst of situations right now. And so we really appreciate that. But Sally especially, I want to tell you, I really appreciate how you inspire people. Thank you. Yeah, all right, I'm going to seize the mic and say a couple of words. And the first is, for, you know, for the last couple of weeks, it just hasn't seemed real that I'll be segueing from school committee. I have absolutely no intention of doing much of anything different. My Monday nights will be a little bit different. We already have rehearsal for Stratton Players, like, scheduled for the next two months for Monday. And then the finished class at Sima Park is speaking to me, too. That's Monday night. Jean, thank you so much for the kind words. Jean is someone who just had kids in the district and has a good heart and a good brain. And every time you have, every school committee, I mean, we started Student Support, like, together. And the Student Support Subcommittee, for those watching, really oversees everything from, you know, curriculum to after-school, to the musicals, to the Honors Academy, to in-house suspension, to codes of, you know, abbreviations. And we just try to make the, what, what the School Department is doing, you know, really transparent, but also always, always for the kids. So for parents who are watching, I feel like I haven't, what I've done, any, any of you could do. You sit, you listen, you're reasonable. You want to be reasonable and you want to be kind. And, and that's what it is. And I have, I have, you know, my, I've learned so much from you all. I mean, all of you. I've learned from Craig as, as a principal, and John as a principal, and now your administrators. Bob started as business manager and now is the superintendent. Our mayor was our representative and now he's our mayor. And all of my colleagues here, Jim on the library, Aiden, this young lady who has political interests, who turned up, and Jean, who was a mom who had brought kids to my children's theater. And then Mr. Stevens, who I met at Reingold. Like, and it turns out that he and my Aunt Joyce had known each other at Keene State back in the 60s. And these connections make Pittsburgh an awesome place. And I want to leave out Judith because she's here so patiently transcribing to a very high level of professionalism, the minutes. We are really grateful to have the accuracy of that because I spend time at the Historical Society and every now and then I dip into School Committee 1895, that file. And we need to keep track of what we're doing so that we can keep doing it better for these kids. But I'm, I'm really not going anywhere. I'm still going to be going to meetings and I'll still, I know how to press the buzzer at South Street. And the pets will continue being at Reingold and wherever we're called. But this is a grand adventure and I, I absolutely recommend it to any of you watching. You know, please join us on School Committee. It is the best. And it's the best people for the best reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have a one-on-one Chromebook update and digital literacy from Eileen Spinney, and I think she is available. I hope she's available and will be joining us remotely this evening. So, Eileen, the, the screen and mic are yours.
Good evening, everyone. And thanks in advance for the opportunity to share what we've been doing and working on in the IT Department and across the entire district. I'm going to just give a brief kind of explanation or demonstration of what our one-to-one initiative looks like and then speak again about our digital literacy and the frameworks that we're adopting for that. So I'm going to try and share my screen. Just give me a moment.
Okay, we can see it, Eileen.
Perfect, thank you. So, just a bit of history. This actually, the initiative actually started back in 2016 and 2017. At the time, we were pretty much cart-based in all of our schools. And at that point, the decision was made to provide our seniors at Pittsburgh High School with a one-to-one experience. So this was in one-to-one and I'll reference it as a 24/7. So they are using these Chromebooks at school and then the majority of them are actually taking them back and forth to home. So at that time, we went with our seniors and we were K to 11 cart-based. The next year, we actually expanded to one-to-one 24/7 for our Pittsburgh High 9th through 12th. So at that point, again, K to 8 was still cart-based and had resources in the buildings, but not specifically one-to-one. In 2018 and 2019, we actually then moved to 8th grade and we also moved to Goodrich Academy, being building-based, basically one-to-one there. And 2019, 2020, we actually moved forward, our 5th to 7th grade. We did our 7th grade actually in the fall, 5th and 6th grade, well, it was in the winter. It was actually in February. So they really only had the experience of this one-to-one building-based for about four weeks before, as you can see, there is a gap here between 2020 and 2021 because that obviously was a major COVID year. So we did some moving around with all the Chromebooks to support the needs of our students and staff at that time. But I'm happy to say, I'm glad to report that as of now, in 2021 and 2022, we are K through 12, one-to-one, a student Chromebook assigned to every individual student in K to 12. So it's building-based, right now, basically K to 8, but we're moving forward with looking at how we might move to a 24/7 from our 8th grade back. And then our Goodrich Academy is now one-to-one. Every student has a dedicated Chromebook and they also have a partial 24/7. Some of the students choose not to take the Chromebooks home, but we have a system in place now, as of last week, where students who need or would, or want to be able to take part in using these resources at home will be able to support that. So that's quite a milestone. I would say that kind of the next thing that we're looking at doing is continuing to grow and change our mindset about, well, to maximize the effective use of all of our ed tech resources. So that's where we are and it's kind of a good segue to actually the digital literacy frameworks that are brought to us by the Department of Ed. Many of you probably know that in 2016, the science curriculum frameworks were updated. And at the very same time, I think within the same week of their release, the digital literacy frameworks came out as well. So we haven't, I, I don't believe it met with the same amount of fanfare, perhaps, that the science frameworks met with. But as you can see, I've just captured some of the strands, the substrands here and the practices. They're designed in very similar nature to all of the frameworks that we have. So the strands and the practices, and now what we're actually looking to do is to take a deeper dive into this whole framework to try and build some common sets of experiences for all of our students, mostly by grade span. So from K2 all the way up to 912. And, and basically, we're looking at trying to build a foundation of all of these skills to make sure that they will be able to, again, maximize kind of the use of all the ed tech resources. So I can say that we have a lot of things going on already in bits, in, you know, in different places, different grade spans, in different schools. However, what we're looking at is something that's a common experience. So we're actually going, we are starting, we already have with the safety and security pieces of this particular framework. So that, what that looks like is, well, we have all this, we have all this access now, all of our students and many of our students' new access to, or greater access, I probably should say, to these resources. And so what better place to look at than how to make sure our kids are safe and secure when utilizing these resources, especially the internet resources. So, for example, a pre-K through, no, excuse me, K through 2, safety, the students are looking at standards that, we're trying to help them understand about passwords, about safe and unsafe examples of online communication, about why we keep personal information private and what type of information should we, should we consider putting or sharing online and, and with whom. So that's what it would look like at, at K through 2. But then this develops all the way, well, probably, I would say, 6 through 12, but especially in 9 through 12, we're looking at making sure they're safe, looking at combating cyberbullying, harassment, and even so far as looking at cybersecurity and hacking and software piracy. So it really does evolve over the course of, of the whole frameworks. And so as you can see, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done. But again, we see some of this already occurring in some of our specials and some of our other core programs, core content programs. So obviously, you can take a look at computational thinking here and that just lends itself so much to what we're doing in our maths and sciences, but also in our social sciences and ELA as well. So I know I said brief, so this is basically what I have. I'd like to entertain any questions or comments, if there are some. We just stop sharing here.
I, I have a couple of questions, Eileen. First of all, it's great to see that level of one-to-one across the district and I, I'm really glad that Goodrich has options for the 24/7 now as well. And maybe this question also might be something, John, you'd talk about, too. Who, who owns that, the accountability piece for the standards there? Like, so typically, you might have the librarian, right, in a school, teach media literacy or, you know, digital technology. So, but we, we have recognized, and that's one I'm definitely following, John, even when I leave, the need for library services at the levels below high school. So, but Eileen, so when, when it exists out there as the frameworks, who's actually doing the teaching of it?
So, well, there, as you saw, there are various strands or components to the framework and some of them lend themselves very, very well towards certain areas. The safety and security, we actually have some components of our health curriculum that already address that. What we're trying to make sure is that the, as again, we have a, that we have a common set for all students to experience, so they'll all have that, that level. So the, some of the, interestingly enough, some of the coding and some of the, the use of, of that type of approach lends itself very well to the arts. And so, but I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself because we really haven't worked very closely. I'm working now with Jen Fisher on, as far as the Unified Arts Director, to look at where we have some opportunities and actually where we have some things that are already occurring. Obviously, some of the computational piece, we would be looking at embedding in our sciences and the math piece. But I've worked closely with John. We've been having discussions, I think, for probably about a year now, John. And we now have Jessica Stadelsky, who's come on board as the Science Director, but she was working very closely with me on adopting some of these standards. We're piloting a lot of things. That's why I'm, I'm really excited now that we're looking at standardizing this. So, but there are some, right now, and John can speak more specifically to this, we do have some library media tech aides who are providing some, some, some services in the buildings. And they also have, expressed their interest in doing some of the robotics and things that we have now been able to purchase and are starting to implement. So Jean, I don't know if that really answers your question. It's, it's in a lot of places. That's why there's a lot, it's kind of, there are a lot of moving targets. So what we're trying to do is to actually come up with the Pittsburgh framework that will say, here are the experiences we're expecting, here's where it's being delivered, and here are where the support structures and, and also the networking for a true, like, comprehensive K to 12 piece.
Yeah, because I think the point that you made in, in the, in your reflection, right, that it shouldn't be left to an elective, right? It should be something that you know every student is going to see. It's just too important, right?
I agree. And as we move into the budget season for next year, you know, we've talked about, you know, what the media tech position will look like in all schools for next year. So this is one of our top priorities as we begin planning for next year.
That's good. Thank you.
I thought this was great and this is like really great progress and really important to just be a modern school district. My big question is just the implementation, like timeline, I guess it was just more of like a, of a purchase timeline, I guess. Is there data that we have about integration in these schools as we bought them of when a school was building-based and it had, you know, all the Chromebooks that it needed? Was there a timeline of, you know, actually using the Chromebooks in real time for the teachers of going from when it was in a cart and you would get it for one semester or for like a couple of months? Now you're using it year-round in your curriculum? Was there like a timeline? Was there like a time lapse of, you know, being up to speed with the curriculum from before? Did that cause any issues? Or did we measure anything like that to see if there was?
So, well, and John jumped in here anytime as well. We have quite a few educational technology resources now. Probably every single one of our curriculum products or has some type of electronic component, which has actually helped us to be more familiar with how and when and how, I should say, these devices are being used. So many of the things, for example, are eye-ready, which we do for math and for ELA. That has a certain threshold to meet the evidence-based type of research that goes along with this. And so we can actually track the usage for this. And I will say that our teachers and in the buildings, they've learned to manage these things very, very well. We typically, in a building-based cart system, we had one cart between two classrooms. So the teachers would orchestrate that, but it was still quite a dance as far as something to orchestrate. So now there really is, it gives the teachers and the students much more freedom as far as their scheduling and how they can meet the demands of the use of these educational resources. So for, for social science, we have some educational components for ELA. We just, and John can certainly talk about this, we've just adopted a new curriculum at certain grade spans, and they have significant education, like the ed tech components to them.
Okay. Okay. And for the, for the literacy framework itself, was that the framework that we saw, it was very, I guess, like basic, but was that for all grade levels? Or was that split up into those four different columns or for different age levels? Is that right?
Yeah, so every single one of those strands has a component that's grade, grade cluster based. So each one of those substrands has something in pre-K through two, three to five, six to eight, and then nine to 12. So as many of our frameworks do, there are standards that are included in that for basically becoming more and more, I would say sophisticated in many cases. But it's your traditional, we have 3D printing occurring now. We need to do that universally. We have robotics. We have the coding pieces. And we also have the, looking at computer and how it impacts society, for example. And so that, we don't have that really universally across there, but for those standards, we're going to be looking at working with our directors and primarily maybe our social science director to see how that fits in because it is part of overlapping frameworks in a lot of our core content areas.
Just so I understand, so for, just more specifically, the programming or the coding curriculum in that latter, the last cluster group, so are these classes, like Jean was saying, going to be just taught as like a one-off course from the librarian or something like that? Or is this going to be an actual course or curriculum on each of these subjects? A regular course that they go to daily on coding?
So at our high school, we will have some specific courses that they're developing. And the, for our elementaries and some of our middles, it's actually embedded into some of those pieces. But I think I mentioned that some of our, our specials, which is really not an elective, students will all have access to that. In our Unified Arts, we actually are doing some coding in our phys ed classes, believe it or not. And so what, I think what we're tasked with now is to make sure that we have documented all of the different opportunities and where we're seeing that they will be implemented. It's not an easy task, but it's one that we're really welcoming the opportunity to do.
Yeah, that's great. I think this is so great. I really think that coding, you know, graduating high school with the computer language on your resume application is going to be just as much of an asset for getting a job than, you know, a secondary language. So this is really great. Excellent. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
So next up, we have Eva Kelly joining us remotely to update the school committee on enrollment trends over the last five years. I asked Eva to present tonight, not only because of the last couple of years, but to look at what the trends have been since 2018. So she'll be presenting some information, both from a internal report that she submits annually to NESDEC, and also some information from the Department of Ed in just regards to school choice in, school choice out. So Eva, are you ready?
Yes, do you want me to present? Share my screen?
Sure.
Okay, great. So can you see it?
Yep.
We tend.
Yep, great. Okay. So thank you for having me tonight. Mr. Jokla also played a part in putting this together. Oops, going too far, I apologize. So we're just going to take a quick look. This is a really high view. This is a graph and chart of the total students residing in Pittsburgh compared to those enrolled in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. So take a quick look. As you can see, oh goodness, as you can see, we're pretty consistent across the years. We did FY 18 to 22. We are down slightly right now, about 77% of the students living in the city of Pittsburgh attend our school district, schools. Do you have any questions on this at all? The numbers are also there. Keep going? I just can't see any of you. Okay, yeah. All right. So the next chart is, again, the five-year view of students attending other schools. We also do have the collaborative on here since they're not in our public school buildings. They are at other placements, but we left them in this chart. You can see our homeschool numbers over the years have gone up. We are down slightly from last year, which is great. We expected it to go up a little bit during that COVID, complete COVID year. But we are back down a bit, and we'll just see, watch those numbers closely. We have done a lot of outreach to those families and tried to, you know, talk with them and offer them opportunities to still participate in our programs, hoping to lure them back. Our next is the charter school numbers, which are also slightly up over the years. Vocational schools are pretty actually consistent. If you look five years back, we're almost exactly the same. So they went up a bit, but now it looks like they're coming back down. Our online, you know, we also expected this, for that to become more popular after COVID, a lot of students decided to remain there evidently and continue with online learning. And you can see also the variation in our private, but relatively consistent. Are there any questions? Okay, I'm going to go to the next. So this is our school choice in, school choice out graph. It's a little bit longer, over 10 years. And you can see, although we do have more students school choosing out, the number and the number of school choosing in are pretty consistent, and we're actually back down on our school choice out from 2018, where it looks like we hit an all-time high, at least for these years. And that was my whole, that's all my attendance information. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? I do have our final number. This is from Eileen. Thank you, Eileen, for providing me with this. Our foundation enrollment this year, this is the best number we have, is 5,122 students this year. Last year, it was 5,092, so we're up about 30 students.
Eva, do we always send more than we receive?
School choice, yeah. Yes, consistently, yes. Any other questions on the other charts?
Jim Walsh has a question for you, Eva.
Yep.
Eva, thank you for the presentation. On your first slide where you have Pittsburgh Public School, does that number include school choice students coming into the school system?
Yeah, that's total enrollment.
Okay. And then on, I think if you go to the, is it the next slide? Yeah, so private schools, that would be students going to any parochial private school, not just in Pittsburgh, but any other city or town outside of Pittsburgh, correct?
Correct. So that includes St. Anna's in Leominster, St. Leo's in Leominster. I think we have a, might have a couple in Gardner, the private Catholic school there. At Cushing, if we have any at Cushing. Yeah, any private or parochial.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I get to hand the baton back to our fearless leader, Mr. Jokla. Do you want me to continue moving the slides?
Sure.
Take away my job, Eva.
Well, you know, John wants to be the live host of the slides here, so.
Oh, I'm done. Okay, it's over. I'm going to stop sharing. There you go. Sorry.
You're next, right?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Eva.
We're going to continue just talking about just some trends and really the absenteeism that we've seen over the last year, really impacts of COVID, the safety protocols that we've asked students and staff to follow, where if you are not feeling well, do not come to school. Also, if you are a close contact, have, have, do have COVID or a close contact, there is a quarantining protocol that must be followed. So what we did was we compared 2018, which was really the last normal year, to this year, and it's from the start of school in each time period through the beginning of December, through December 1.
They get froze, Bob. I apologize.
Okay. Okay, so again, as I was mentioning, looking at the most recent normal school year, at least year-to-date, compared to this school year, then looking at, you know, the protocols that we're following for students and staff, again, the reasons why students, what's contributing to the level of absenteeism. And I think the bottom line that the school committee and those watching on TV should be aware of, we are not alone. This is a pattern that's being replicated across the Commonwealth and across the country. So we are just one community, but this is our community. So I'm here to just report on some general trends. So one of the things that, we'll start off with just attendance and really attendance by school, and this is number, the students' number of days in the year and the percentage attending. And by school, looking at 2018 to 2021, and you can see just about there's a range between 2.3% and 4% decrease, Longstow a little bit higher, 4.6% decrease. When we start seeing, you know, attendance rates of around 90%, those are, I guess, those are concerning levels in normal times, but in, I guess, COVID times, this is, I don't want to say the norm, but this is what's being replicated in other communities as well. Again, trying to look at the number of absences by school, this chart just compares, and it's pretty consistent where in 2021, the number of absences are higher at each school than they were in 2018. And this next chart, I'll, I'll take a couple of minutes to explain. So the blue bars are the percentage increase in absenteeism, and then the orange bars are the percentage increase attributed to COVID-19 protocols, we'll call it. And in many cases, the percent is lower. If you look at Crocker, Pittsburgh High, Goodrich, it's almost negligent here, Longstow, excluding McKay and Memorial, well, actually, those three, the percentage of students who were absent was less than the total absenteeism rate. But whereas when you look at the district as a whole, it was just about 30%, and I have it on the table in the next chart, about 30% of the absences of the 40% or so were attributed to students following COVID protocols. So here's another view of the absenteeism data for students by grade level. And grades five through 12, except for eight, are highlighted because those rates are generally below 35% and in some cases below 20%. If we go back in time a little bit, going back to the spring, students in grades largely five through 12 were able to get the vaccine. So the vaccination rate, the vaccines, students who elected to get vaccinated back in the spring, you can see the decrease in COVID-19-related absences versus the K, pre-K through four, which wasn't eligible to receive the vaccine. You know, so what does this mean? Attendance is a part of the state's accountability formula, and for elementary schools, attendance has a 10% impact, and for high schools, it has a 5% impact. Given that this pattern is being repeated throughout the state, the state is, I guess, looking at reviewing attendance as a component of the accountability calculation. There has been nothing announced yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if there is some type of at least recognition of that and, you know, perhaps a waiver on the attendance criteria for accountability for the school year. So there are two groups of students, or two groups of people who come to our schools every day, one are the students to learn, and then we have teachers to teach, and then the next slide will have all staff. So again, just looking, same time periods, 2018 to 2020, by school, what was the, you know, increase in terms of the absences, days absent, and also percentages? You know, Pittsburgh High was low, it's a single-digit increase, and actually, Rhine Gold and South Street actually had more people out in 2018 than in 2020. So there's no, you know, there's wide-range variability overall for the district. The number of staff, teaching staff out is up just about 19, a little over 19% when comparing these two time periods. When we look at all staff, and this includes clerical, custodians, paraprofessionals, and this is just aggregated data by, by school, again, the number still is around that 19%. And again, the, the patterns follow pretty much the teachers because teachers are our largest group as well. So that's, I think that's the last slide, John, yeah. So I just wanted to share that information to provide some context. Many districts across the country are challenged with staffing levels. There are not, I don't think we have really any extra substitutes or any, many substitutes to deploy. Pittsburgh, like a lot of districts, have a shortage of, or we have openings of paraprofessional positions that have yet to be filled. So all those factors put a little bit more pressure on existing staff and, you know, kind of is still a post-COVID, I guess, consequence. So whether some of those people participated in the Great Resignation or not, you know, we're, we're working every day and our principals are working every day to provide coverage in classrooms to make sure our, our students are learning. And, you know, I give a lot of credit to our principals for leading through this, this difficult year. Any questions?
Great.
Any other year, we would.
Well, yeah, it's, you know, I think when, you know, when this year started, you know, we, I think we were prepared for a lot of things, but, you know, I don't think everybody realized or recognized, you know, the impacts of, as they call it in the popular press, the great resignation, and, you know, meeting the needs of students and staff as we, as everybody has returned and as we continue full-in-person learning. So, you know, we're learning something.
Could I add to that, Bob? Because I just think, so my last meeting here, I'll just like remind everybody again, like, teaching is a really difficult profession, and it's stressful. This is, can't tell you like how many kids have sat in front of me and hacking, you know, like, and you can't know anything. The nature of HIPAA means that you don't, you know, and I think of like all the elementary school teachers and the middle school teachers where kids can't be vaccinated, but in our district, there are a lot of kids who aren't vaccinated. And it's just, I just, you know, it's just, maybe think of the teachers as you're thinking about this season. It's not an easy job. It's never been an easy job, but it's, it's really darn right scary sometimes. And we've come a long way, and we're hoping, I mean, I think all the rest of the professions, I don't know about you guys, but there are so many people who I still, that they are not in their offices, right? They don't, you know, I actually had an interesting discussion with a doctor who said, oh no, we don't see children anymore for respiratory illnesses. I thought, what? Where do you take your child now for a respiratory illness? Because, so I guess it's urgent care is the answer. And that's ridiculous. So I guess I'm just, like, maybe I'll take this one last chance to say, support the teachers in the district as much as you can, and our kids, of course. Like, it's just difficult for them. I was shocked, like, you had one figure up there for the junior class where I think it went up 112% is their absences, and, I mean, that's curious, too, like, why one class, you know, versus some of the others? And how much of it is stress? How much of it is, I mean, I think it's absolutely ridiculous. The state is trying to have an accountability measure about attendance and at the same time telling us all the protocols we have to follow. So, I mean, it's just, everybody should just recognize that for an Orwellian ridiculous thing. But just, it's just difficult. You know, you got, if somebody does wake up and they don't feel well, I mean, I can tell you, so many times, there are kids sitting in a room where you think, should you have stayed home today? But there's, that's a difficult thing to do.
Yeah, I, I'll just, you know, a couple, I'll say, I guess, maybe examples or reference points. A couple of weeks ago, Principal Roach had a student advisory committee meeting on a Monday morning, and he shared the attendance data for Pittsburgh High. And, you know, their attendance rate was in the high 80s. And, you know, they're usually in the low 90s, low to mid 90s. And one of the students said to me, I happened to be at that meeting, said, well, you know, what do you expect? You're telling us to stay home if we don't feel well. And I said, you're absolutely right.
Yep.
That is true. You know, the teacher and student stress that you mentioned, Jean, is real. You know, as you know, we were closed the day after Veterans Day. There were districts the week before Thanksgiving, I don't know about anywhere around here in Massachusetts, but nationally, there were some districts who closed that Monday and Tuesday, large districts. And, you know, who knows what'll happen in two and a half, three weeks. But a lot of districts, and I'll just share, you know, from urban superintendents, a lot of the urban districts in Massachusetts are facing the same challenges we are, especially. And I think, you know, we're all coming to work every day trying to figure out the solutions. We've deployed staff from central office. Our directors went to one of our schools last week, including John. John was a science teacher.
Yes.
And, you know, whatever it takes to pitch in and to have minimal impact for the students. So on a positive note, one of the people that we work with from the statewide system of support was at one of our schools, and despite that school's staffing challenges that day, they gave us one of the best reviews in terms of what was happening in the classroom. So there's a lot of good work being done by our teachers and also our students who are showing up and.
And nurses.
And nurses, yeah, exactly. They've, they've been at the forefront of this whole crisis, and as one of the nurses said to me recently, they said, I've never been yelled at so much in my career as I have this year.
Yeah.
You know, just from a protocol perspective, and, yeah, hopefully it starts getting easier. You know, there are more people are vaccinated. Again, right now, we're still in, you know, kind of cold and flu season, and this is the point where, I mean, just locally and nationally, the numbers are increasing, and we're trying to find ways to mitigate the, not only the COVID spread, but also educate our students, which, you know, right now and for the foreseeable future, I do not see Commissioner Riley saying remote learning is an option. So, yeah.
I don't think anybody wants to go back to that.
No, 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 that's, I think that's unanimous. So if there are no other questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
That concludes my report. And Mr. Schalfer, I know we have, I guess, a couple donations and a couple grants.
We do. We have two donations and two grants to be accepted tonight. Both of our donations presented through Ms. Luisa Fernandez, our community outreach coordinator. First one is from Melissa in Dennis Barrett for $100, and this is for materials directed towards our Spanish classes. And the second one is from Lynn and Anne Marie Golden, same thing, it's for materials, Spanish books, games, and flashcards to be presented with an estimated value of $600 to be used during our Spanish classes for the community. We have two grants. We have our Mass Grad Grant, which was submitted through Ms. Curry over at Goodrich Academy for $35,000, and that's to support at-risk students with tutoring support. And also our ESER III Grant, which is the last iteration of the ESER Grants for $16.6 million to be accepted. And this will be for, largely for HVAC, building updates, supporting our staff in mental health needs across the district.
We're ready for the action items.
Moving forward, the action items, action item 21-144, if it's all right with the committee to bundle these. 21-114, 21-115, 21-116.
Make a motion to bundle.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bundle. All in favor of those aforementioned action items?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none. It is unanimous. Thank you.
We're hoping to approve the bundle.
Second.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
We approved to make it a bundle. Approve the bundle itself.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, as unanimous. Thank you. No need for executive session.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.